Good evening. Thank you for joining us. We're going to go ahead and call the Castle Hills. Special City Council made an order and determine if a quorum is present, a quorum is present. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Harada, will you lead us? Thank you, Mr. Harada. I don't believe we have anybody signed up for citizens to be heard. So we'll go straight into new business discussion, if possible, action on the proposed FY 2023 budget. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Mayor, I think that's ready to fire up. It's open if you want to share the screen.
I'm gonna grab the mouse real quick, excuse me.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor Council. This is our, I think, fourth or fifth budget workshop. The second one, since I've submitted the proposed budget to y'all for review. What I wanted to cover today, after last week's meeting was giving you all an array of information to help as we progress through the adoption of this budget. I know some council members wanted to have the no new revenue budget. What you have in front of you is a copy with the no new revenue column. And so the bottom line that shows what the new, no new revenue rate would be with those dollars, and we'll cover that real quick. First, I just want to illustrate, you know, for, for everyone at home, and I think this is a good understanding of what our dollar gets here for the city of Castle Hills. And if you break down the percentage of that dollar, it shows that, you know, mostly in dedicated to 60% of public safety. Sorry, guys, but that, that is the main two departments there at about 60 some, 60% of the dollar, if you see. And then the other idea was just giving a breakdown so residents can understand what that dollar looks like. And our goal is to put this on the website and Facebook as we continue through this process, so they can accurately see the expenses related to a dollar in composition with adopting a budget. This right here, as a reminder, City Council approved the voter approval tax as part of the proposed. And that was what was incorporated in there. And I've put this here because you've seen this before with the surplus or unbudgeted surplus of 213,000 based on the voter approval. And in yellow there in the column, I'm showing you 67,268. And what I have done here is 31,000 is from the no new revenue from the property tax. The other portion, 36,500, is a result of going back and sharpening the pencil, going back through some line items and doing some decreases based on some more evaluations of the five-year average where we're spending that line item this year. And so I was gonna go and highlight some areas that we have worked to decrease in the general fund moving forward. I've just highlighted a few examples. In the abatement right-of-way beautification, I moved that from 9,000 to 4,500. You know, mainly that's for right-of-way and/or improvements for, you know, the monuments that, that we have done for maintenance and so on, to have that done. Again, you know, text-only mows those right-of-ways twice a year. And I've put money in the last couple of years to do those frequencies in between text dots. And so it's not so heavy-handed on the Public Works Department. I've adjusted the attorney legal fees from 75 to 70, paperless automation four to three. That's in regards to us working to get online permitting from that standpoint. Street signs, I adjusted from eight to 6,000, and I'll explain later why. And then street maintenance minor, 50,000, just moved down to 45,000 with the 5,000 savings there. That street maintenance minor is where Mr. Harada has been doing minor projects. A lot of the alley approaches that have been done throughout the city and then other work in that area that, that covers public works. And then the monument sign, we originally had this in the general fund at 7,500. I move it to an eligible ARPA expense. I've highlighted throughout the budget, you'll see some other minor changes in the line item there in front of you. It's your copy. But that's the bulk of the 36,500 that I have worked to sort of decrease the budget in this case. The bottom line was trying to show you where we are based on some decreases and then what the actual no new revenue rate would be, bottom line. Again, I wanted to show this again because COLAs, the main point of discussion tonight is looking at the 3%, 4%, 5% COLA. And, and I'll go through the next slide here real quick. This is. So here on the screen there, what I've done is take a look at the voter approval, the no new revenue rate, and the top slide is indicated if we were to do 5% COLA for the employees. What that also indicates is the budget surplus at 223. And then the officer, we want to adjust the police officer to make sure we're in average in line with all the other cities. And that's what's going to take to be at the average for what I showed you all last week in comparison to the 10 or 12 cities. With that, a 5% COLA still gives operating surplus of about 57,000. Now, if you look at the no new revenue rate, that 36,000 that I've put in there as decrease, 30,000 would only be generated from the no new revenue. And a 5% at 173, it still shows a negative 125 that we'd have to come up with in that case, based on that tax rate. The other rate is, I'm showing as an example, like I mentioned last week, was coming up with a median, sort of that happy median to show a, a medium tax rate between the voter approval and the no new revenue and what that would indicate. And there, at a 5% COLA, we'd still be looking for about 33,000 to provide to the employees. Moving down, same scenario, same formula. If you look at the 4%, we are, have 92,000 operating budget surplus. Again, no new revenue rate just drops us down slightly to 91,000 negative. And then on the other side of that, with the median tax rate, that actually puts us in the positive almost $500 with doing the 4%. Next slide. This is a scenario showing the 3%. Again, same formula. It accounts for the decreases in the budget that I've reviewed and saved, and then it shows a scenario of the 3% there. And let's see, does that have 4%? 3%? Okay, sorry. So your large document that I provided you all. There, this one right here shows the 3%. Again, with the voter approval, it increases that operating surplus, 126,000. No new revenue brings it down slightly, but it's still negative 56,000. And then if you go over the other tax rate, the median actually gives us the operating surplus of about 35,000. And then again, at the bottom there, which is included on the sheet you have there, that's the tax rate scenarios there. We've talked about this. The valuations obviously have gone up. The property tax is a decrease that y'all are proposing from last year. And the impact on the no new revenue rate would be at $64. And then if we went with the median tax rate, it would just move up to 118. And then obviously, the voter approval tax rate is 172. Increase based on last year's cost to the taxpayer as a result of the MNO and INS, which was at 1,875 on top of that. This again is a slide that I showed last week, again, talking about the COLAs and how we surveyed about 20 other cities. People were coming up, our cities were coming up and being creative. Most of average 4% to 5% for employees in most cities on that, that list I provided you. And then some have done merit pay, one-time adjustments across the board. And then they've done one-time payments to employees from the ARPA, which we will discuss later. And then it carries the survey is what I showed you all last week. The national totals being 8.8% and then city actual 2.0 and then 2.5 leaves us about four and a half left to be at the average for cost of living for our employees. Here, I wanted to touch on the capital projects here. In the budget, we've obviously are following our capital improvements plan. We've identified 12 streets for reconstruction for drainage projects. 3 million in streets, 3 million in drainage. Funding is required. I know we've talked and about the certificates obligation 22, but obviously that will come to an election now. And then I just wanted to give a historical for council. Since 2019, we've been able to do $5 million in new street reconstruction. Over the last three years, we've done about 500,000 in street maintenance. Currently, eight are being done this week, which gives us about 35, 36 streets that have been done with the maintenance. So again, the infrastructure with the last three years as part of the street maintenance program to protect the integrity of the city streets through these efforts over the last three years. And I've listed obviously the, the major capital projects we've done. The Antler Roadway Project, Street Improvements Phase One, already complete. Street Improvements Phase Two, they're finishing up Bluewich, Shalimar, and Watlin, and they're scheduled to finish all three streets the second week of September. They'll be completely done two or three months ahead of schedule. Phase One, Banyan Glen Tower, 2 million, 2.9 million was the first phase that we finished a couple of years ago. And then most recently wrapped up Phase Two, Carrollwood-Banyan, of 1.8 million, which was funded out of the 2020 COs. And then again here, since 2020, the cities followed the street maintenance program and addressed nearly 30 streets. Currently, the city is addressing eight streets this week with the contractor in town. American Rescue Plan. So I wanted to touch on this for y'all. The city received the total of about 1.1 million, 550,000 last year, 550,000 this year. And we used 297,000 in last year's budget. I think most of y'all know what it was. I know Ms. Daines is new to the council. And just a quick breakdown, we were able to buy a city, a generator for City Hall here, which would have been very helpful because we lost power for an hour this morning. And that is supposed to be installed late September, Chief. Okay, October. Okay, just in time for winter coming up. We also were able to, which are scheduled, and y'all are aware, we went out for bids to improve and revamp our entire IT infrastructure. They're scheduled to do the install of the new servers next month around this time, so that'll take care of that project. We use some reimbursements to the firefighters due to COVID. We did revenue replacement portion of that money. And then I'm trying to think anything else, Chief, from that. That kind of, oh, we also did Phase Two of the fire station improvements with that money. So I think that covers all that was spent in that 297. And so just so I can, so you could see there, it shows June 30th, 2022, 553. Projected ending 553, that's the revenue line. As a result of spending the 297, before putting together the proposed budget, there was 810,604. And what I've done now is, right now, just in the proposed budget, I programmed in Phase Three to complete all the improvements for the facility at the Fire Department at 34,000. And then I've put in 100,000 into the Commons improvements. And so what I wanted to tell you on the Commons improvements and why I put that in there is because, first of all, it has no impact to the property tax, no impact to the general fund. It comes straight out of this money. I programmed that in because of what I was hearing feedback from residents. The Parks and Projects have been working on this for two years. A culmination of things for quality of life improvements here in Castle Hills. So from my standpoint in formulating this budget, my thought process was to put some money into the Commons because we finally have a plan after two years, and this is the funds to use it that don't impact property taxes and/or the general fund moving forward. Now, I've put this money in as a program. It's in the proposed, adopted is whatever council determines on that for the ARPA standpoint. So I just want to make that clear to everyone that, you know, again, putting that in here is a result of a lot of the work, the Parks and Projects and feedback I've heard from residents about having those kind of amenities in the Commons. And then next Wednesday night, we have a Town Hall meeting as directed by the Parks and Projects Committee. We'll hear about the concepts. Look to prioritize any projects in there because I think that's the impetus behind the meeting. And I guess we'll find out if anybody and/or residents are interested in putting those type of amenities in the Commons. So, and I think, and Councilman Joyce can, can jump onto that one because the idea was to have this Town Hall meeting to hear feedback in case we needed to program this into the final adopted budget. And that would have been a recommendation by the Parks and Projects after their September 10th meeting, I believe, sir.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Rappley. You'll have a recommendation from Parks and Projects after the September 10th meeting.
And I think part of that is, there's a little bit of urgency. One of the things I know the mayor has been wanting to do is get a playground there and fundraise for it. And the mayor has worked with craftsmen on getting a discounted playground installed there after TML. So they don't have to basically relocate it back to their headquarters, I believe. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Rappley. So just for clarification, if everybody listening, Texas Municipally holds annual conferences. This year, it's going to be in San Antonio, and part of that, they have exhibitors that bring everything that a city might possibly buy. And the playground is no exception, so they'll bring a playground, set it up at the convention center and show it off. They typically sell it afterwards for a discounted price. I reached out to the playground manufacturer and asked if they're planning on selling it, which they are. So the idea is that we can bring a plan to council on the Parks Committee to have everybody give it their official blessing before we have to rush at the end of the conference to buy it. So they're receptive. They like the idea of already having it committed, and they've already put together. It would be sold at a discount, and so they're applying a discount on top of that. So there's a substantial savings that I think would make it a nice amenity. And to Mr. Rappley's point, we've done a lot of streets and a lot of drainage. There's some people that don't have streets or drainage problems, and they'd like to see an improvement that they can realize while they're sitting here or while we have different events going on in the Commons. Something that's close by, they can watch their kids while they're having a good time. And I think this is something that we could do very realistically as far as terms of financing. And we provide a great community benefit.
And, and part of that dollars accounts for potential shade structures out there in the Commons as well, which I think are, are a priority out there, especially with the events and having people get relief from the sun on some of those hot days when events are happening out there. So again, you know, there's been a, a master plan done, a concept for Commons. Not to say that everything can be done. I think the idea is that it be phased in. But it's, it's figuring out what those priorities are, and hopefully at this town meeting, we'll hear from people who actually, you know, want to hear about having amenities like that from that standpoint. So again, this is no impact to the property tax or general fund. I want to make that clear. So. And then as you look down there, after plugging in those to proposed, it still leaves 676,604. For use if those were to programmed in at 134,000. Here on this slide, what I wanted to go over with you all, council, is showing you those two that have been included. Not included are the Fire Department requests, the Education Rescue Tools 28, Rescue Struts 13, and then the software that they need for the database, 9,700. Those are requests. Those are not in the current proposed budget, and this would allow these expenditures to not impact the general fund. Public Works, Mr. Harada had requested a field truck. We could use ARPA money to purchase this one-time truck for Public Works, which wouldn't again, impact the fund for contingency and/or the general fund itself that were to be taken out of there. And then street signs, as we've progressed through, moving through, changing out street signs, I think at about 70%. This would allow to finish out Phase Three and finish out all the signs. Emergency management, we've talked about that for a long time, about some improvements we've needed to make. Chief has done some research. We have the iInfo, but it's a little cumbersome for signing up. This would actually be an app, a ray of alert system that we could use fairly quickly to notify residents of road closures, emergency situations, council meetings, an array of things which could be plugged in with the use of the ARPA money. And then we've talked about emergency management as a trailer. Right now, Public Works deploys those. Fire Assist was helped putting out barricades at times, but we don't have a trailer. And then we talked about this with our emergency management committee, actually getting new barricades. Ones that are a little bit stronger out there, they're the more of the oval type versus the three, what are they called, Chief? Three, three, three-piece that don't stand up in the wind too well. So the idea would be able to purchase some of those for emergency events or flooding. And then the last one is the one I took out of the general fund, Monument entrance signs and/or gateway signs to use the ARPA money. So these are all just potential suggestions. And so they won't be impacted by the general fund if we were able to use those. Now, if you look at the total, what I've come up with is if we were to put all those into ARPA, it would be about 125,700 in costs. Give or take, that still leaves a balance in the ARPA fund of about 550,000 to do more projects over the next year. Here's the seed. What I wanted to show you on the seed was some areas, what the balance is, the proposed, we had 347,000. I plugged in another 30,000 because we still plan to use 30,000 this current budget year to improve some of the building here, carpet and other areas here. And then another 30,000 I plugged in to eventually put up the court and conference room offices. And so that gives it down to 317,392, I believe, 372. For ideas that council may have or wish projects they'd like to see incorporated into this proposed budget out of seed. Next steps, we'll have a hearing on the budget and the tax rate on September 6. And then, of course, adoption of the budget, tax rates, September 13th, 6:30 PM. Questions, council?
Ms. Daines?
I had a question back on page eight of the slides. Sorry, you're gonna have to catch me up a little bit. It looks like we gave a cost of living adjustment in 2020 of 2%. Zero adjustment in 2021. And then this current budget year, we've given a cost of living of 2.5%. That's correct.
Yes, and, and I'll go back two years. Again, we, we had a very tight budget then, you know, coming out of trying to prepare that budget right in the middle of COVID and, you know, we lost revenue. Obviously, we did some revenue replacement already with the ARPA funds, which were eligible to do that, to help offset some of those revenues that year, and the employees, you know, were not okay with the 0%, but this is a team and they work as a team. And, you know, again, I, I don't get a COLA, so I'm here trying to get as much as I can for these employees.
Okay, the ARPA comment led me to another question. Okay, and so on page 11, you mentioned the street signs, the 6,000, and I guess I thought that I saw you took 2,000 out of the budget for streets.
Yeah, so I took 2,000 out of there because we were gonna put the average for Mr. Harada and street signs, and a lot of those, not just necessarily street signs itself. He uses that line item to buy stop signs. Regulatory signs, yes. So he still needs money in there. But the idea is we've, we've done two phases of replacement of signs. In conjunction with whatever street we were doing, we've done a new sign with corresponding street to help offset that cost of the general fund. So I, I reduced his by 2,000 because part of that was accounting for more street signs. But now I can just take him out of one-time ARPA to finish out the rest of our street signs in the city.
Okay, and some, maybe I don't understand what ARPA funds are supposed to be used for, but how would street signs qualify?
There's a, if you look, I provided a copy there, and it, it's pretty broad on the eligibility. Where's that one, Chief? It's the, it comes, it comes under government's. Which one is that, Chief? The final, last year when the ARPA funds came out, there was certain eligibility, but they've kind of broadened it. You know, when they started telling us last year, it was for, you know, premium play, pay for employees. It was for drainage, IT improvements, park improvements, because they wanted people to get outdoors more. And then there was reimbursement of revenue and COVID-related to public safety. So those are some of the categories, but most cities now, and, and there was another ruling, and Chief can go over it, that kind of broadens that scope. And it covers things that public works might need. So, and it's pretty, pretty general. Go ahead, Chief.
Back in January of this year, initially, when the ARPA funds were being made available to the different municipalities, state governments and so forth, they came out with an interim final rule, which it was pretty much the preliminary guidelines on how the money, once you receive the money, on what things it could qualify to be spent for. And they were a bit more restrictive, but then when they actually came out with the final rule, which was January of 2022, they kind of laxed on what the money could be used for, and then also how much you could use towards particularly lost revenue. At one point, when they first started this, there was a very long algebraic formula that you had to use to determine what your revenue loss was during the COVID pandemic. Now, when they came out with the final rule, they pretty much made a sweeping change where any municipality that received less than $10 million could take that entire award that you received and put it in as lost revenue. And then those funds could be used for what they call government services. And those government services pretty much are very broad. They allow you to use it for many different things, infrastructures, public safety, capital improvements. There, it's, it's very broad, and it's, the different categories are here. And actually, I think on the third page that you have, it gives you some examples of some things that those funds can be used for.
And I believe the last page has sort of the categories related to city departments and what you can.
Right on. And it's still, now, there are still some particular things that you cannot. There are still restrictions. And they wanted to make sure that even though they're giving you a great leeway of what the money can be spent on, those initial restrictions are still applied to those funds as well. You can't use it for pension funds or for legal expenses, and there's about five different categories. But any of the things that are being presented by the city manager today are fully within the, the guidelines of the, the final rule.
And one, one other point too is to touch on, and you know, we, we've, I've talked to many cities about what they've been using their funds for, and it seems pretty broad and, you know. You know, last time we had funds like these, we were very careful with the CARES Act funds. And, you know, I remember having to get all approval from the county auditor before we bought anything, which I had all approval. In this case, you know, we, the chief reports back to the federal government with this case. And so he's kind of the main point of contact, especially related to emergency management. And so he's kind of oversees this area as far as the guidance and interpretation from that standpoint. What a lot of cities have done actually, because they've been created with COLAs, is actually do one-time payments to employees to help offset their costs. Some have done $1,000 to every employee, 1,500. And neighboring cities near here, in case anybody's interested, I have that information as well. That other cities have done this, so it's not precedent we would set if we were to do that for our employees.
Mr. Isbren?
There's a lot here, so it could take a little bit to unpack it all, I think. I guess I first want to thank you for bringing us, as we requested, the no new revenue proposed budget or budget proposal. I think it's really useful to us, and I think it shows that there's opportunity for us to tighten. but not cut to the bone. Um, and that it also gives us, if you look at the potential tax rates here then, the opportunity to potentially still give a tax break to residents without going down to the no new tax rate level, which I think I talked about last time, which based on the data that we've seen, I think would be close to cutting to the bone. I also think it's really important for us to be demonstrating to our community that we're being efficient. We recognize the economic times that we're in. And if we look at this tax rate of the point five oh eight, six, eight, eight that you put in there as the median one, then that still gives a, you know, if, if I, my math's not going to come to me real fast here, but if you look at the bottom line on those numbers, the, it looks to me like that's at least a thirty percent reduction in the amount of additional new taxes we could have collected based on the increase in appraisals. So we are taking thirty, we, if we went with this tax rate, would be taking thirty percent less than we could as a voter approved tax rate, which I think is very important to demonstrate to the community that we are being efficient here. Yet at the same time, with the budget that you brought to us, we see that we are not cutting to bone. I think the issues here are really then around cola and where we settle on that. And I, you know, I think they, you know, if you look in there, you can judge for yourself what you feel is appropriate. I'm immediately drawn to the notion that a four percent cola is a very good rate. And as Mr. Rappley just said, we can use ARPA funds this year, if we wanted to, at the end of this year, to say, in addition to that cola, we will, we are going to do a one-time payout of X number of dollars to each city employee. Uh, and that's federal dollars, so it doesn't impact our budget. So again, we have the chance to give a healthy pay raise to reduce our budget somewhat, to definitely reduce our tax rate somewhat, which I think is a real appropriate way in this economy for us to go forward. So I'm very optimistic about what, what I'm seeing here tonight. Um, I, I want to talk about ARPA, but I think I want to pause there and see if anyone else has any other things to say, and maybe at a later this evening, I could come back to that.
Well, again, as I showed you the scenario or the formula there on those charts, one of the key things too was the police officer adjustments. Because as I showed you last week, we're below and we need to be on average slightly or at above. And I think incorporating this shows how we can be competitive for police officers. Um, and Chief will tell you and that, um, you know, there are some issues still. I mean, we, we have gained some police officers, but I think we're losing one for a little while for military leave and, and a couple of other things, but, uh, we need to be, um, vigilant about that, especially about our police force and making sure that we have the rotating shifts, um, because I believe there are five patrol, but five on each shift. And so ideally, and so, um, I think the city deserves that, and I think that we as a city need to be competitive, uh, to make sure we recruit these police officers, um, here in Castle Hills and, um, I, I know that we've lost some for, um, better pay, better retirement to some of the bigger cities. But, um, I know Chief has been diligent and proactive about trying to keep as our officers here, which he has done, but, um, we still need to raise that so we can, um, try to fill all vacancies in the police department.
And I, I don't think anybody up here disagrees with that, and I think that this budget addresses that. So it's sort of, um, I don't want to say a red herring, but to talk about budget and always say that, oh, we have to do this to keep these police officers. We're already doing that with what we're looking at here. So I think it's important for our residents to understand that what you've just said is already being taken care of. And what we're looking at on top of that is then a very robust, I think, cost of living increase, as well as the opportunity to do a one-time payment for all city employees. That is federal dollars that will not impact us. So I think it's important for people to understand that. We're not up here tonight talking about anything that's jeopardizing salaries, jeopardizing salaries to the police department. We've done what we need to and, uh, to ensure that that patrol officer level is raised up.
Uh, Mr. May, you had a comment?
I did. Um, so I don't, well, I don't mind putting you on the spot because you always have a good answer. But if,
Try, sir.
If there was a four percent increase for our officers, does that get us to the competitive place, or do we still have work to do, in your opinion?
Well, I think the goal is a four percent across the board, not only for police officer. We're talking across the board for all our employees. Obviously, that's going to help raise, uh, that would be in combination for like police and fire who are getting their steps or anniversaries. So that's going to raise their salaries already, but we're talking across the board for all employees, four percent.
Mr. May, go ahead. Just clarifying, are you talking about the police officer adjustment?
Right, I'm talking about the problem. I want to be very specific with the police officers because you compare other municipalities. If we were to give the proposed increase as you have outlined, does that get us into the confet- competitive realm where you think we should be?
Well, I, I'm doing this one-time adjustment here. It's captured to getting us to the average. And then when that officer comes on board, they would automatically get the four percent. So yes, that brings, that would bring us above the average to help us be more competitive. Right? Would you agree, Chief?
Okay, and, and if that were, if that were the budget, could the middle range that Councilman Isbrand has mentioned, the point five zero eight, would that accommodate that, um, uplift in the cola?
That is correct. If you, let me go back real quick. I know that's one's a little hard to see from there, but, um, that's what accomplished it there when you look at the four percent on below. So yes, that, with, with the budget decreases, the, uh, capturing the police officer adjustment, that potential, um, ad valorem, uh, I mean, excuse me, the ad valorem that gets us there with that median tax rate. Um, and then the cost of the four percent cola brings us on the positive side by five hundred dollars.
One of the concerns I have, if we were to go with the no new, uh, revenue rate, the point four nine, there is always that worst-case scenario of appraisals being reevaluated or the subsequent year, the appraisal's going down for whatever reason, markets, et cetera. We used to have a resident, um, expert on worst-case scenarios here on the council. We don't have that. But I think it's important that we do consider that. So what would happen if we had a tax appraisal year where everything went down ten percent? What would be the remedy?
Well, again, that would hit right into the ad valorem collection of that property tax, so, um, I, I, again, I don't know enough to say how that would impact in the future, but I mean, that would certainly affect all three of those proposed tax rates to bring down that total ad valorem collection the city would get under the M and O collections.
So we would have to make some very hard decisions in that subsequent, uh, tax year.
I, I would, I would say yes. I mean, two years ago, we made some very hard decisions. Um, so if we're back in that spot next year, making those hard decisions, I'm sure that we would, um, we'd have to evaluate the entire scope of the budget. I mean, yeah, so, um, two, two years ago was a tough budget to put together. So if things change economy-wise, um, and valuations went down, we would be in a different scenario, you know?
I do want to compliment you on finding some ways that we can trim and get into what I call the middle zone. I just feel more comfortable in that middle zone because I do think we need to be sensitive to the taxpayers that are already getting hit from all different sides. But I also feel that if we're going to have a significant increase in cola, this should be the year. This is when the inflation is happening. That inflation rate is not guaranteed to continue or persist into next year. And I also want to be ahead of the curve in being competitive. I don't want to lose good officers. Um, so.
Well, I don't want to lose good employees across the board.
I keep saying officers because that's what's in my mind.
Police, fire, across the board, because again, um, you know, other cities are, are stepping it up with, um, you know, doing reviews of salaries and I had gotten that data because they reviewed salaries across the board. And so the idea is to make sure that we are competitive across the board. We don't lose employees to other cities, um, from that standpoint, so.
Well, I am fairly optimistic for lots of reasons. We have almost every single revenue stream showing upticks. We have new revenue streams that we really haven't talked about, um, that did not exist last year. We have expenses like the legal expense that's been literally, uh, you know, cut in half or sixty percent. Um, I foresee it, if this council continues in the direction we have, we're not going to have two hundred twenty-five, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year, uh, legal expenses. So I'm fairly optimistic. Uh, I just, I don't think we need to go to the, um, no new revenue, point yet. We're not there. Uh, on the other hand, I think we need to show voters our sensitivity.
Yeah, and if you have a copy, I mean, the, that's why I adjusted, uh, the, the line item for city attorney, because we've been on pace about seventy thousand. If you look at the five-year average, we spent one hundred and twenty-eight thousand on the five-year average, and then, you know, three years ago was two hundred and twenty thousand, then one hundred and thirty-five thousand. So, um, we've been obviously not spending that dollars related to the city attorney. And so, um, you know, between myself and Mr. Zamiron and others, we, we have Mark engaged on things that we really need his review and confirmation of things, you know? So we've been good at trying to monitor his budget as well. Um, what I would say, sir, is if you, you know, I put the scenario there for five to four percent. And I, I'll just say this, that if you look at the, the other tax rates and that difference right there, and can't see on the screen my eyes, but you're talking about thirty-three thousand difference between four and five percent. So, um, if there's some other thing going back to review that we need to, or if you're taking just thirty-three thousand out of the general fund reserve, because we're almost at seven months to get our employees to five percent, then I would highly recommend that.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul?
Well, the numbers here.
I knew you'd figure them out, Ms. Paul.
Our current tax rates, the point five two.
Five, two, two.
Yeah, the current, uh, yeah. So we're there. What I want to know, there's two, two or three things, and I'll just keep it short because of the conversation right now. I don't like taking national averages considering who we are, where we are. I mean, it, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in New York City might get you a thousand-foot apartment, Philadelphia, Washington D C, Dallas, Houston. So I don't, I think that's not really a good way to compare things in our circumstance, whether it be for cola or anything else. Let's keep it local. Let's try to find out what goes on and things of that nature. Secondly, I, I, I don't see why we can't keep the, the point five two like we are. We're already there. We've already kind of approved it. But yet, take the budget that you presented under the no new revenue. We don't have to, just because we have the higher tax rate five, the, the current, like the current tax rate, doesn't mean we have to spend it. You got two hundred thousand dollars difference there. You can cut it down to as if it were a no new revenue budget. We have some left over. We can do some things. I imagine that the majority of the people in our city, and, and, and I, I mean this with all due respect, many people who have lived here want the commons taken care of, yes. But I have an idea that streets and drainage are number one, are number one. Last thing I'm going to say is we are in a recession. Home prices have already started to fall. So if we kept the price where we are as far as the tax rate, but budget on the new revenue or no new revenue, we can bank the rest of it, use it as we need to under certain circumstances. Uh, we have, just like last, uh, meeting, we voted on, uh, going ahead with the, uh, the bond, the, the COs for the new streets. Hopefully it'll pass. But it's going to be a lot more expensive due to the circumstances. But that being said, we got, we got a couple houses over there in Manhattan that they, they flood every time we have that serious issue. We need to help them. We need to help houses like that. If they're, well, where are we going to get the money if we push it all into a higher budget? Just my thought.
Mr. Joyce.
Count.
Oh, miss out.
Mr. Paul, what, I mean, I agree, priority is streets and drainage, and that's been the priority the last three years. That's why so many projects got done. So much money has been dedicated in the investment of all that infrastructure. And again, you know, uh, as we, we move forward with the C O process.
Right.
And I have to say that again, uh, despite the petition that came in, you know, the, we were on schedule to issue those funds this month, August.
I know.
We would have been started engineering two months from now.
Well, with not only that, but we had saved this couple hundred thousand minimum as far as we know. We don't know what the interest rate's going to be by the time we get there, and we don't, we'll do more than anything else. It's maybe cut back the number of streets that we're going to be able to do. So, so that, that's a given, and that's where we are. And, um, so we have to be prepared to fulfill these obligations, I believe, but I'm, I'm for being frugal. I'm for making sure that I agree with, with everybody up here. In today's world, and in the past, I don't care what anybody says. Our police, our fire, our first responders are important. We need to do as we can for them. Now, let me say something else on the C O's you started to say, or anybody that might be watching or listening. That bond, C O, whatever turns out to be that we're going to vote on, make no mistake, legally, that money will have to be used for what we say it's being voted on, period. Whatever, no matter what anybody else says, that money will be used for streets and drainage, and it'll be outlined in the documents that we proceed with. Thank you.
Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few comments myself. Uh, with respect to the budget, I, I agree with some of my colleagues who have said that we really do need to give back a piece of that to the citizens. I think given the, the nature of the economy we're in now with inflation and interest rates and all the rest of it, I think we need to give some of that back and not, not sweep it all up. Uh, secondly, we need to take care of our folks. I mean, the, the secret to an organization is your people. We need to take care of the people. No big deal there. Um, with respect to the ARPA funds, I think that's something we should look at in terms of, um, all of the stakeholders. You know, that's kind of like a gift from heaven. This, we have what, over six hundred thousand dollars left at this point. It just dropped out of the sky. So I think that we really need to think of everyone. All the citizens, staff, and the community at large, I think all need to benefit in some fashion. And I would further suggest that it be looked at in terms of a long-term solutions and short-term solutions as well. Over the last couple of weeks, we've talked about investment kind of things. And so I think we really should look toward that. And with all of that money, I, I think that we can certainly find a way to take a piece of it and invest in our infrastructure. I think we can find a way to take a piece of that and put it in the community amenities for the benefit of the citizens, as you have, as you have already proposed. I would also propose in terms of the long-term look that we put a few dollars aside for planning uh, and economic development, where, you know, we can need some help with our zoning code. We would like to get an economic development group started, and we'll talk more about that next month. But, you know, some portion of funding for those uses, the long-term stuff. I think another thing that's quite interesting that we talked about last time was energy savings, the idea of solar panels or whatever that might mean. We still have over three hundred thousand dollars in the seed funds. That may be a perfect use for that kind of money. It's exactly, I think, what CPS had in mind when they put that money aside twelve years ago, whenever it was. But in terms of the short term, ARPA, um, I think as you hinted at, Mr. Rappley, I think the, perhaps the, the cola could come out of that. And maybe it's a cola plus as well, whatever, whatever that might allow. And, um, and I think the, certainly the fire department renovation is something that's very worthy. And thank you for the, that list that you provided. Those were all. And thank you for their, that list that you provided. Those were all worthy things. It was a hundred and twenty thousand, whatever it was. Those things are all worthwhile. So maybe. We can get most or all of that in there so that we're taking care of all of our stakeholders. We're looking at the future and we're looking at present day. So, thank you. Those are my comments.
And, and I think Councilman, that's a good point because. When we had the CARES Act funding, you know, we did things like that to help the fire department. Where we purchased that equipment and was not an impact to the general fund to the residents itself. And so I think this kind of is in line with that where we can make sure that the fire department has the equipment they need. But doesn't impact the general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Joyce, I kind of want to double tap on something that you said as far as the solar. I mentioned that before their last meeting and I think there's enormous potential there. For us to invest in solar, specifically in the commons where we could use it as a shade structure, similar to the carports that you see at some of the dealerships they have around the city. We're spending. Ms. Davis is going to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's around. Seven, eight thousand dollars a month. For electricity, for utility bills for electricity only. Right? So that's.
So roughly, if the culmination of all the departments, we break it down to each apartment as a cost. It's roughly about sixty thousand as a whole to the cities, to all of our buildings, all of our facilities. And then the line item in streets has sixty-six thousand just in streetlights as well.
Correct. So my hope is that if we could take these dollars, invest them in ways that could continue paying dividends to the city and. As a result, the residents now offsetting some of the expenses that we have going forward. I, I can't imagine a better, better way to spend the money. Mr. May made a comment, or I think it was maybe Mr. Paul about. Maybe both of them actually. The way that the market is going, there's been some retreat on home prices. And I said last time that I don't want to get to the point where I feel like we're cutting off our nose to spite our face. Ironically, I met a gentleman from Gonzalez, Texas this weekend, and he said that that city. Is currently in a similar situation where they were just trying to keep property values as a result taxes. I mean, property taxes low. And they found themselves in a little bit of a difficult situation where they're. Hamstrung. And not being able to do all that they want to do. So I, I think it's important that we try to read the tea leaves as best as possible to figure out. What the future may look like and how we can better prepare our cities so that we're not in such a similar situation. And Mr. Joyce, one other thing I wanted to, to double tap on that you said is. Potentially using those dollars from the ARPA funds. To do a one-time. Potential bonus to the employees. The dollars were designed to be an infusion into the community. And our Castle Hills community means a residence and it also means all the employees that we have because. If it wasn't for the employees that we have, we would just be a great community. But because we have a great administration and police and fire, we're a great city. And that's really. The difference. And so my point is, I don't think it has to be this or that. I think there's a way that we could potentially do the four percent. To Mr. Isbrand's point and maybe a one-time cash payment. Out of the ARPA to kind of level set and get the employees to where they need to be. Because I think we can all agree that it's cheaper to maintain employees than it would be to have to go through constant training and recruitment. And. Everything that we've had to do recently. Just because that's kind of the nature of the beast. I think the best foot that we could put forward to. Keep our employees and make them happy, the better.
And Mayor, just again in common discussion with other cities, I could tell you that. Neighboring cities like Leon Valley and Terrell Hills did that for their employees. So just to be transparent, so everyone in the audience knows that those two cities did the same thing for their employees during this time.
And we have any action?
One more point, Balconies did the same thing, but they didn't use ARPA fund. They used a one-time. They used a one-time expense out of the general fund balance to do that for employees. This year. Sorry.
Mr. Isbrand, please.
Thank you. I just, I held off on asking about ARPA because they say there's so much to this, but I, I just want. There's some really interesting ideas that are floating up here. But I guess what strikes me about ARPA or what gives me apprehension as we go into this is we have a finite amount of money. And I, and I'm sure if we were all to put our projects on the table that we want, we could spend that money several times over and over again. I was, and I feel like. We need to invest the time to think about where we want those dollars to go and not just slowly drain a fund. And as we talked about at the last meeting, I think any opportunity that we have to do something that you turns those ARPA dollars into investment. Which again, I think solar is a perfect example. You invest money in something, you're going to save money. In something that can go to other things, I think is really important. So we have not in the budget workshops up to now had any conversation about this. And Mr. Rappley knows, because I told him yesterday, that it bothers me that we came into this with. His proposal to spend X amount of dollars from ARPA on. The commons. But I think any of us could also argue that, well, equally, I think we should spend a lot of money on the improved communication system. Which I'm glad to see is in the presentation now that we're hearing tonight. I think that's one of the most integral things we can do and what we should learn time and time again, as we go through this process. Is our ability to communicate with our residents in an emergency and to disseminate information to them is really important. Well, that's Joe's project. That's what I want to do with it and others want to do these other things. But it really feels to me like it would be a great value to us to sit down and look at this. Before we start committing dollars to certain things and say, this is the finite amount of money we have. This is what we believe the priority should be and not predetermine what some of those priorities should be or what isn't on the list. But again, most importantly, that we look at this as a rare opportunity with this chunk of money. To invest in something that can keep giving a return to the city. So I'm hopeful that before we take a final vote on the budget. That we'll have a chance to have more of that discussion and really determine how we think these dollars should best be spent.
The Councilman, to your point. And, and again, Chief, there's some things that can't be used in our, but just for transparency reasons. I know you can't make debt payment, you can't make retirement payment, you can't do certain things. And so just wanted to make that clear. I think here in this case. You know, we, we've done so far what we've done with the ARPA, especially this budget, were two key things. Because I know for. Ten years, we, the city's been wanting to get a generator for city hall, which will be here in a couple of months. And then. To be able to spend the money outside of the general fund to upgrade comprehensively. And protect our IT hardware and what we've done in coming next month. It is two vital things in this organization that's needed to be done for years and years now. So. I, I think those were a good investment of dollars to ARPA.
Yes, they were, and I absolutely don't dispute that, but we all know that as we spend. The amount gets smaller and smaller. I think it's incumbent on us to really think through. How we're going to spend those dollars to do exactly what you're talking about here, they, and to what Mr. Joyce said too, that it's, that it has benefit to. As many in this community as it possibly can, that it's money well spent. There were, and we know we can't spend it on pensions. No one, I didn't hear. Anyone suggest that we can. We do know the infrastructure needs that it can go to. And that also takes some pressure, I think, off of our, our, our overall budget to be able to do this. I just think that it would be helpful to us instead of saying we have a pot of money, let's spend it, to say we have a pot of money. What are, what should our priorities be? That is a wise use of that money. And again, if we walk away from this tonight with a tightened up budget. A reasonable, I think, a, a, a good, strong COLA. The ability, I, I would never hesitate to use the ARPA money for, to some of that for one-time payment because there is no greater asset we have to this community. Than every single city employee. That we invest that then, and we're still able to reduce the, the tax rate or the, the tax a little bit. And give something back to the community. I think that's a good place to be in. I'm not a big fan of taking in more money than we need. To spend to take care of our essential costs here. And that's the one thing that continues to bother me about staying at the voter-approved tax rate. This shouldn't be about revenueing, let's bring in extra money. You know, we've been through tough times before. I think we know in our personal lives, in our municipal life here. I think we know how we can manage through tough times if we, if, if we get there. But this is just, I think, overall. A really solid opportunity, but I think it's really important to think very carefully about those ARPA dollars because once they're gone, they're gone for good.
And again, that's why Councilman, I looked at. Large, I guess, purchases that are one-time. For things that have been needed, you know, more necessarily. Capital items through our departments. And so I, I think my goal would be. The next council meeting we have on September sixth, and that's why I listed those as possibility expenditure. So. You know, I, I work at the council's desire to incorporate or not incorporate some of those expenditures. And or add to if you have another idea about a project or something you'd like to see in the ARPA from that standpoint. One thing I'd like to go back on Councilman May is that you started talking about revenue and, and. You know, sales tax, Ms. Davis got sales tax and we're up again this month and. You know, permitting and sales tax in court, I mean, all of those areas are up and up on the revenue side and. We're projected to be over a hundred something, twenty thousand at the end of the year, based on our projected revenues from last year. So. You know, again, as I mentioned last week that. You know, we are going to have some savings due to extensive, not to say extensive, but we do have a number of vacancies. And we've been able to control expenditures this operating budget. So we'll probably be over the four hundred, almost five hundred thousand in savings next year. In this current budget. Thank you, Council.
Mr. Joyce.
May I propose that in response to Councilman Isbrand's suggestion that we try to schedule a workshop to go through the ARPA. The big picture priorities for, for council? Or is there a better way to do that?
I think it could be done on that September sixth meeting because. The September sixth meeting is the three hearings. And so we can have an agenda item just like this to cover that specifically. Unless Council, you wanted to have a, a sooner meeting, I mean.
So one thing that I just want to add. For purposes, as it relates to the budget, it's important that we discuss the ARPA. Other than that, we just have to program the money by the end of the summer. And then we can still make some adjustments as we go forward. So. I don't want us to feel like we need to take care of. That ARPA discussion right now before the budget, right? In my mind, the budget's the most pressing thing.
Correct, Mayor. And then the, the idea too is that if we were to do anything. This year within the operating budgets out of ARPA. As in, as a need to do it now, then we could do it through a budget amendment at the end of the year. And remember, that's a special fund. And. The way we've developed it through Ms. Davis and Ms. Wallace is to make sure that those expenditures are shown from that separate fund for this budget.
Mr. Paul.
Mr. Rappley, I was looking for the sheet. I guess I misplaced it or didn't get one tonight. The difference between. The voter approve rate. And the. No new revenue rate. On a three hundred thousand dollar house. How many dollars you talking about per house?
I had it on the slide, but it's, it's on this right here. So if you're talking about no new revenue rate at three hundred ninety-one thousand.
Value of a house.
Value of a house, three hundred ninety-one thousand, because that's what they use. Was one thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine. Even if you're going with the no new revenue, that's on top of sixty-four dollars. So. You're talking with the median nineteen. Thirty-nine there, nineteen ninety-three. Which brings a little bit more in for Mad Bloorum, but only an impact of a hundred and eighteen dollars.
Hundred and eighteen dollars per resident.
Per resident.
But yet the. Potential for the city could be.
The potential could be a hundred and seventy-two dollars. So.
Right.
By, again, my math is correct, you know, you're going to drop off fifty, sixty bucks. To the resident individually. Again, that's. That doesn't impact people who are on the frozen as far as that, but. That is too directly based on that evaluation, evaluation of the home.
Right. Okay. And that's why I was saying that if we stayed the same. But. Set our budget based upon the no new revenue budget, it gives us some flexibility if and when we needed it. And. You know, there are some things still that we're, as a council, of course, have been. Everybody's like Mr. Isbrand said, everybody's got a little project or this or that, but we're all trying to. All the projects center around one thing and that's what's best for the city. Thank you.
Well, again, Mr. Paul, I think that. Anything that's done. As a lower rate helps offset that valuation to the property owner, the direct impact. So. If y'all go by doing the median like we've looked at, that'll help extensively to the property owner based on that valuation that was done. And you know, here it's, there's no taxes being raised. It's actually a drop. So that valuation helps with the impact to a resident here. So. And again, that's why looking at the ARPA is to try to. Find things outside the general fund to reduce that overall expenditure, which again is less revenue we need. Impacting the individual property tax.
Yeah, I can just point to my finger right now, one, that's. Because of the safety for our people. The jacks for the fire. Without a shadow of a doubt, we need to try to do something about that. But we got the three hundred thousand, three something in seed. We got the six hundred, something left in the American Rescue Plan. So we should really. Sitting there talking about close to a million dollars. That would not affect come through the budget. There's like I just called special projects.
Well, again, right now, at the proposed budget, there was eight hundred and ten thousand. And through that eight hundred and ten, you dropped because the programming in the commons and then. Phase three of the fire department renovations. So. Again. I programmed that in because first of all, we need to finish out those improvements to the fire station. Like we did, we used through phase one, I believe, phase one and. Phase one, we used the CARES Act and phase two, we already used this year's ARPA money to get the fire department up to, go ahead.
Now, the ARPA money has to be spent by when? Twenty-four.
It's twenty-four, I believe.
Yeah, by next.
Twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty, twenty-five. Okay. But we have to earmark it before then.
Yes, sir. It has the programs before then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other action, questions, comments?
Uh, Council, is there anything else you'd like to see for the next meeting? As we continue towards adoption, any other information I can get for you to assist? Combination of different COLAs, you know, what, what? Based on the, the outline I've put here, I think this is three good choices. From the standpoint of showing the tax rate versus the COLA, which would be the biggest expenditure. In trying to come up with. Assistance. To employees.
Okay, I don't think we, we're good. If we have any announcements, we can do that. If not, I want to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Paul, all in favor? Unanimous, it's seven forty, the meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you for being here with us tonight.